Let the meeting be called to order. Welcome all to our Town of Fort Mill First Council Meeting for the year 2020. I'd like to welcome each of you and ask that if you have a cell phone, please silence it so that we can give you our full attention and you ours. So, welcome, happy to have you, Happy New Year, Happy Monsoon. How did we miss winter? And I hear there's a game tonight that's going to be telecast around eight o'clock. So, we're going to be very prompt and efficient this evening as we go through our, our meeting agenda. So, come on in, there's extra seats, welcome. With the call to the order, Council will stand for a pledge of allegiance and Councilman Helms will give our invocation, you feel free to join.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another day you've given us to many blessings of life. We pray that you'll be with us tonight as we conduct the town's business, give it a wisdom that we can conduct it fairly and evenly with, without, for our citizens here. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Just in time. Hello, Trudy. Let the record reflect that Councilman Shary could not be here tonight, nor could Councilwoman Cook. So, with that, we'll move to the minutes of our December the ninth, 2019, meeting that have been provided to all of council. Are there any changes, deletions, additions?
Here are none, I've moved to accept.
Alrighty. Got an accept, all those in favor by show of hand, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you. Public comment, pursuant to section two dash forty-six of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Mr. Broom, do we have anyone signed in?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Danielle Wedeman?
Danielle Watts.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, I forgive you.
I'm getting old, I can't, I can't see very well anymore.
Well, you look grateful, getting old when.
Well, you are very kind. Give her whatever she wants, I'm kidding. Welcome, nice to have you. Could you, for the records, state your address, please Danielle?
I'm Danielle Watts Redman, I live at four twenty-four Danielle Way.
Yes ma'am. Danielle, what can we do for you today?
Well, I'm here as a product of Fort Mill native, and most importantly for today, I'm here to represent the Historic Paradise Foundation. And I have a few things I just wanted to present to the council today, but the first thing is, I want to thank you for everything that Fort Mill as a town has done to, to support the Historic Paradise Foundation. We will be the recipient of gifts and things for the Martin Luther King Service Week. So tomorrow's our designated day, and I want to thank you for including us, as well as the other wraparound services that we've been receiving since, starting in August. So, and I have these here for your review.
Good, thank you.
So, that was the first item that I would like to address, and do I get three minutes or may I get a little more?
You can get what is needed, three minutes is the limit, but if you're addressing more than one thing, we're good.
Well, I have it attached, if I am not able to get to it, then we can discuss it further as part of a futuristic action plan.
Sure.
Alright, and so Paradise is in Ward Three. Hi, Mr. Huntley, we love you. Alright, so, item number two, I don't know if this will be the, the form for presenting it, but I was hoping that the Paradise community could be included in the amendment of ordinances that were adopted prior. So, Code of Ordinance, Chapter Six, Building Regulations, Article Two, Technical Code, Section Six dash twenty-six, Adoption of Standard Code, so there are a lot of homes in the Paradise community that really need to be brought up to code in so many ways, so we're talking about water, sewage, some homes still just, you know, are functioning or surviving as if they're back in the depression of before. So, the Historic Paradise Foundation hat is, the mission is to basically revitalize Paradise, so that we can have a win-win situation for the Town of Fort Mill. And by meeting the basic needs, I feel that we'll, we'll be on the path to make that happen. And we've been able to provide some of those based on the initiatives that we've achieved since, starting in August, we've done so much as a volunteer, and, but we're going to need as many resources, grants, and partnerships as possible. One idea is to propose a community center that will fall under Fort Mill Town and Recs that would be available for all, but to also have an indoor location for learning, for nutrition, for our monthly events, for basketball indoors that were, when it may not be weather friendly, financial classes and courses, all of the resources that we need to kind of, like I said, the wraparound for the parents, we have a lot for the children, but we need things for the parents because the children have to go home. And so, just having a, a plan for being able to cater to, to those who need or who may not be able to go out and go to college, but they can learn about this right here within their community, a variety of, of, of things that will improve their life. So, and it could be a priority for the fiscal year of 2021, and I'm willing to, the Historic Paradise Foundation is willing to serve as a co-applicant. And so I've attached the five oh one C three, I've attached the, the approval of being able to write federal grants under Historic Paradise Foundation, so I'm willing to, to be part of the solution. So, it doesn't require all of Town of Fort Mill's budget or whatever, I can use my skills to complement and, and create a win-win situation for the town. I also included a few issues that, by talking to the residents, as I'm delivering bread every week, they were telling me some things, and so like power lines, there were some that were down based on some of the storms that we've had, and so, well, power lines, one, there were some trees that went through, that are going through some of the power lines. And so I submitted a ticket to Duke Energy to, to go through there, but it would be nice to have more oversight, especially since they're right there in the community. So, I only put one address, a vacant residential address, but it would be nice if they could just kind of canvass through the area and see where it is and, and how we can be proactive in eliminating that. So, the second issue were some fallen trees, specifically on Washington, a resident was saying that there were some trees that had fallen and it caused a water blockage. And then also within that little area, he said there's a lot of, like, like a forest down there, looks like a rainforest. And he said he asked for some streetlights to be put down there, just for the safety of residents, but also I think it would be nice to be able to just look through and, and know that if your kid's walking down this way, that they're safe, but there's a lot of trees and, and it'd be nice to just clean it up a bit. I don't know who that will fall under, so I just put Utilities Department, Publics Work, question mark. Issue number three, and I don't know if David, David Broom would be the person, but I'll put you right there on there, so, there's some broken sidewalks, and I wouldn't want any of, of the five children that I care for to ride a bike or skateboard or sometimes even walk on some of them because of how they're, they're, they're not sloped, you know, efficiently because of the trees and, you know, what do you call it, weeds that crack through. And so, if we can kind of level those out and, and make them safe, because we would not want someone to file a lawsuit on Town of Fort Mill, who's ever responsible for those sidewalks. So we just want to make them smooth enough for people to walk anywhere. Alright, issue number four, which this is going to take the most work and I'm willing to help however, vacant lots and houses, we have, we have quite a bit of them, and part of it's locating the family members or descendants of those who have died or in nursing homes to be able to say, I'm willing to, to do something. And so, one solution that I've posed is that they could, you know, basically either use, provide the home as charity to the Historic Paradise Foundation so that we can give resources to rehab and make affordable housing for the residents there, or anyone who wants to come and have affordable housing because we know that that's an area of concern. So, but we will be willing to, to be the beneficiary of those and have, and have someone oversee or manage the properties to, you know, to make it more lively. And then the last item that I included was some of the initiatives that we've done since August, and it's, it's been a lot of work, you know, and you're talking about working purely with volunteers, with me leading the way, which, you know, that's what I'm here to do. So, we've received over $4,000 in monetary donations that we've put back into the community. We had a really nice Christmas event that was, that was really funded and supported by everyone, the town, the, the real estate agency, brokers, and a little bit of everyone chipped in to make that a success. WRHI, they gave us over 200 gifts and Mr. Huntley was there looking all nice in his hands, and, but Ray Felder donated and, and communicated with people as well, so there was a lot that we've been able to do and we have not done it single-handedly, it's been one of those, like, family projects, everyone has chipped in, lent a hand and resources or, or called someone who knew someone that was able to make everything work, but, and we got a stove yesterday for an elderly lady on Steel Street, you saw that? And so, delivering bread, you know, we're opening up the doors to trust, you know, that we're not coming here to take anything from you, what can we do to help you? No one who's eighty-some years old with a grown disabled son who's like sixty, you know, she's, she's making it work because she has to take care of him. Who's going to take care of him when something happens to her? So that's probably why she's still here, to be that, to be the mom for him that no one else will be. But she was talking about how the bread was such a blessing for her, and it was probably helping her survive with a non-working stove and oven. And so, just kind of throwing it out there and creating awareness, there were a lot of people who were saying, hey, do we need this? I got a stove, but the heating element doesn't work, I say, we are not giving her a problem. So we need a stove that works. So, it was delivered, installed, and then the stove was put on her porch, the oven was put on her porch, Town of Fort Mill, can someone please go by and pick it up? If, if needed, I can get somebody to go and put it up to the top of the row. But these are the type of things that, you know, we want to continue to do, and, you know, just as a Fort Mill family, and so, I'm just grateful to be here and thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Can I call you DeeDee? DeeDee, it's been wonderful to see.
I never get to grow up.
Yeah, no, you never did grow up. We're not going to, alright. It, it's been wonderful to see the effort that you have been the spark plug to, to get this organized and moving forward. There are many things on your list of needs that will be different from a responsibility standpoint.
Right, right.
So Davie, could you set up a time to speak with DeeDee about each of these and let's see where we can help and what can be done, because I, you know, I don't have all the rulebooks, but I do know that the effort is there, the heart is there.
That's right.
And if, if we can work in partnership, we'll always get more done.
I'm speaking with Tim Veeks tomorrow, when I'm at Town Hall receiving gifts on behalf of HPF, so if you want to kind of, you know, a triangle is the strongest geometric figure, so the three of us together can talk at two o'clock if you're available. Okay, wonderful.
And I was just going to say, if you reach out to some of the different groups, like the Rotary Club and some of the other clubs, they would probably be able to help too.
There's several that are looking for things they can do to support the community.
Amen.
So hopefully between us opening these types of conversations, we'll be able to take advantage of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you from my heart for what you're doing.
Well, thank you for your great job.
Any questions for DeeDee?
I got a comment. I've worked with her several times, and when she says she'll take the lead, believe you me, she will take the lead. Because one thing, on some of these items, the Boy Scouts would be of help, they want things to do for their Eagle badge.
Sounds great.
I actually know of two group, three groups that were looking for things they could do within their community, so.
Okay, wonderful.
I'll make sure Davie has the contact information and we'll see if we can't get some folks to work together.
Thank you. I have to attend a basketball game for four, so.
Thank you, understand.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you being here.
My pleasure.
Alright, with that, presentations, I think I'm the first to be sworn in. Judge Kyle Hobbs will do the swearing in. This is our first official meeting for, yeah, for 2020. This is my husband Russell, don't hit me with it.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As mayor of the Town of Fort Mill.
As mayor of the Town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And I will.
And I will.
Use my best endeavors.
Use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes for which.
The purposes for which.
I have been elected.
I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you so much, thank you.
(applause) Now raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Chris Nitty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As council member of the Town of Fort Mill.
As council member of the Town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use.
And will use.
My best endeavors.
My best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you so much, thank you.
(applause) Now raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Chris Nitty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties.
To exercise the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
As council member of the Town of Fort Mill.
As council member of the Town of Fort Mill.
I will equally.
I will equally.
Fairly and impartially.
Fairly and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust.
Exercise the trust.
Reposed in me.
Reposed in me.
And will use.
And will use.
My best endeavors.
My best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And carry into effect.
And carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes.
The purposes.
For which I have been elected.
For which I have been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank you.
Ronnie says now we're legal. Thank you Judge Hobbs for always being available to make sure that we do the swearing in as properly as we should. I'd also like to speak for my fellow council members and say that we greatly appreciate everyone that took the time to vote. You know, voting is not just a right, it's a privilege, and as has been the practice over the last, I don't know, eight or nine years, I've found that many people don't know where they live and who represents them. It, it's very difficult for new people to determine, or if they have a Fort Mill address, they might not actually be in the Town of Fort Mill and might not be able to vote. So I think it's imperative before the next election that you determine, you know, where your home address is, is it in the county, the unincorporated area, or is it in the incorporated area, so that you can determine who to speak with when you have issues that you'd like to have resolution, because jurisdictionally, you know, we represent the town of Fort Mill, and there's much area outside of that. This council meets every second Monday evening at six o'clock in this chambers. We reserve the fourth Monday at seven thirty a.m. for workshops or additional meetings as needed throughout the year. We publish the information in regards to our meetings several days in advance through all the press in the area. We also have quarterly open opportunity for you to come and discuss any issue with us once a quarter. I can't remember, is it the last meeting of the quarter? In the last meeting of each quarter, you can come at five thirty and talk with us about anything. We're also working on some additional community outreach, our community continues to flourish, and, you know, we know that we need to ensure that we have communications lines available. As an added, exciting venture, we also are videotaped every second Monday, and that's placed on our public TV channel, I am joking. It, it is out there for you to watch in the event that you're unable to come to the meetings. So we appreciate our media partners at CN2 and of our public channel, and certainly Tony McMahon that does the hard work to help keep us to where we can inform you of where to get information. So thanks to each of you, if you voted this time, thank you, if you didn't, do it next time. With that, we'll proceed with the rest of our meeting. We have no old business items. On new business items, the very first business item is to vote for the mayor pro temp position to be filled for a one-year term ending January 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to defer new business item number one until January twenty-seventh, 2022, due to the absence of two council members this evening. Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to defer this item to the next Monday morning meeting and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor by raising your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business item number two, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County Tax Map Number zero-two-zero-one-three-zero-one-zero-six-two and zero-two-zero-one-three-zero-one-zero-six-zero, containing approximately 3.267 plus or minus acres located along Banks Road from GI General Industrial to HC Highway Commercial. This is in Ward Number Four, and our resident expert is Penelope. So with that, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve?
Approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Penelope, would you like to guide us?
Sure. And we also have a public hearing tonight, would you like to do that first?
I see it there now, okay. Would you like for me to open the public hearing first?
Whatever's convenient for you, Mayor.
Yes, yes. My legal counsel says let's open the public hearing first. The public hearing is now open for the item of amending an ordinance on our zoning map for the numbers previously stated from General Industrial to Highway Commercial. No one. We will close the public hearing now, thank you.
Good evening, Happy New Year, everyone. Mr. Bayless-Mack would like to rezone this property from the General Industrial to Highway Commercial, he's requesting the downzoning for this. It does comply with, the comprehensive plan has this area as employment, and at this time, he does not know what type of commercial district, but he is aware of if any new business comes for this property and, and you deem it to be rezoned to Highway Commercial, they would have to do the TIA requirement and go through the process. Planning Commission recommended to approve the recommendation to Highway Commercial and also staffed it as well.
Okay, so we have planning commission recommendation, staff recommendation, and with the change, they'll still go through the normal course of requirements as would any business or any change that would need to take place.
That is correct.
Do we have questions for Penelope? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business item number three, first reading, and we will open the public hearing as soon as I finish reading this, an ordinance amending Article One, Section Seven, Subsection I, One A of the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill so as to add specific parking requirements for hospitals, gee, I wish we had one, and inpatient medical facilities to amend the parking requirements for religious centers to provide for a public hearing and to provide for matters relating thereto. Penelope is also our expert on this, but we're going to open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone that needs to make comment? Anyone? We'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move to, I need a motion.
I move to accept, new business item number three.
Okay, we have a motion to accept.
And a second.
And a second.
Yes, in anticipation for the new hospital, we currently in our code do not have any regulations for a hospital for parking regulations, so this text amendment is basically to create regulations, and the regulations would be two parking spaces per patient bed plus one per every three hundred square feet of administrative area, that was the one part of the text amendment. The second part was to combine religious institution with the public assembly criteria. When we did our research with surrounding York County and City of Rock Hill, we were very high with the religious institution, so we basically did this text amendment to be consistent with the surrounding area and also with the public assembly. We took it to the Planning Commission, they recommended approval of this text amendment, and staff has also recommended approval.
Excellent. Any questions for Penelope?
I really like it when we are taking an effort to determine what is consistent with other municipal usage and zoning so that we are not the outlier unless it is specifically for the benefit of Fort Mill.
Sure.
So thank you so much for doing that. We have a motion on the table to approve, no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Information and discussion, information discussion item number one, update on current projects, our town manager Davie Broom.
Thank you Mayor, thank you for allowing me to give you an update on our current projects that are ongoing and some future projects that are on the horizon. I apologize, I was unable to get this information sent to you for your tablets for tonight, I
for the town of Fort Mill so as to add specific parking requirements for hospitals, gee, I wish we had one, and inpatient medical facilities to amend the parking requirements for religious centers to provide for a public hearing and to provide for matters relating thereto. Penelope is also our expert on this, but we're going to open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone that needs to make comment? Anyone? We'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move to, I need a motion.
I move to accept, new business item number three.
Okay, we have a motion to accept.
And a second.
And a second.
Yes, in anticipation for the new hospital, we currently in our code do not have any regulations for a hospital for parking regulations, so this text amendment is basically to create regulations. And the regulations would be two parking spaces per patient bed plus one per every 300 square feet of administrative area. That was the one part of the text amendment. The second part was to combine religious institution with the public assembly criteria. When we did our research with surrounding York County and City of Rock Hill, we were very high with the religious institution, so we basically did this text amendment to be consistent with the surrounding area and also with the public assembly. We took it to the planning commission, they recommended approval of this text amendment, and staff has also recommended approval.
Excellent. Any questions for Penelope? I really like it when we are taking an effort to determine what is consistent with other municipal usage and zoning so that we are not the outlier unless it is specifically for the benefit of Fort Mill. So thank you so much for doing that. We have a motion on the table to approve. No further questions. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Information and discussion. Information discussion item number one, update on current projects. Our town manager, Davey Broom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to give you an update on our current projects that are ongoing and some future projects that are on the horizon. I apologize, I was unable to get this information sent to you for your tablets for tonight. I did email it to you earlier today, but what we'll do is go through these pretty quickly, but on the, you can see here is a list of current projects that are ongoing. Some have been ongoing just for, just recently, for a few months, some upwards of a year, a little over a year. But we'll move to the second, next page. For our Tyler products, a year or so ago, our you, along with staff, we did some studying on updating our current billing systems and really all of our systems across the board. And, you know, we knew that we were kind of behind the times on some of our systems, so staff went out and did some studying to determine what was available out there to us, what technologies could we take advantage of. We brought that to you for the Tyler technologies. And from this, these are some of the projects that we've already completed, and starting with the finance phase. It took place and began November of 2018, which addressed our general ledger, our purchase orders, check requests, purchasing cards, budget preparation module, and our fixed assets for like capital projects, or capital assets. That has worked really well for staff this past year. It is fully functional and working well for us. In July of this, of 2019, we began our human capital phase, which includes our human resources development and our payroll. We're still currently working on that. It should be rolled out in a few months. So in August, we began our intergov portion of Tyler Technologies, which is more toward our, it's leaning more toward our planning department, building departments, utilities, public works, asset management. We just began that recently, so we are, staff is working really hard to build, build that In November, we began our general revenue phase, which is our Tyler cashiering and general billing. We expect to be on this for about a six-month period or so before it is built and fully operational. We, once we complete the phases that we're currently in, we have future phases before finished with the program. That will also include our business license, which would be in the intergov program. Our asset management would be in intergov, and again, utility billing. Utility billing is one of the more important parts to this technology. We had to hold off on it for our purposes of changing out our mass meter change-out program. We needed to get that completed so that would go hand in hand with this billing system. So that's why it's on the list for future phases. Next on our list is fire station number two. Chief Wilkerson has been giving us updates periodically on the construction. We're nearing the completion. It is under construction, but our projected completion date right now is May. It could possibly come in in April, but I did not want to promise that that soon. We do anticipate being in it and operating by May. Next is a project that seems to have, feels like it's been going on for quite some time, but.
Thirty-seven years.
We are, I promise you, we're at the, we're at the threshold of starting some work out here on this park. It's our Walter Wildlife Park upgrades. The plan review, projected completion date is this month. I actually met with the engineers, engineering firm today that's doing the workforce and with our stormwater managers to find solutions on how we can move forward. We've completed all of staff reviews, and the stormwaters is the trickiest, and the state regulations are difficult to navigate, and, you know, we need to follow every one of them. And the site has caused us to take a very good, deeper look into our stormwater management, make sure we're following all state regulations on it. We expect to have requests for quotes advertised for 30 days, once we get this portion completed. There will then be a public bid opening. Upon that, staff will review the bids to make sure they meet all the guidelines that we're asking for, and then the staff will bring a recommendation to you to take a look at and vote on. So we're very excited about this. We're at the end of the line in the reviewing process, and we expect to be moving forward with that project very soon.
Davey, I'd like to mention to everyone here that one of the hardest things for me to adjust to and accept in municipal government as opposed to business, private business, or just the business world as a whole, is that nothing happens quickly. Every step of the way is governed by a host of issues that we must, not just want to, but we have to adhere to. So it just adds a tremendous amount of time. So from the time that we announce something and we get excited about it, it does seem like 37 years since the park was donated to us and the upgrades are in place, but it's still very exciting, and we're looking forward to it. I would like to go ahead and mention too, that because of the construction and what we're doing in the park, that will be long-term wonderful. You'll see a few adjustments to the Strawberry Festival at the same site for the public safety and for the project's timeframe. So thank you all for working so hard on it, and I'm really looking forward to seeing dirt move.
Thank you, Mayor. Another project that we're very excited about is our new website.
Yay.
Yes. If you've navigated or tried to navigate our current website.
Tried to navigate, that's a.
The try is the key word. It is difficult to navigate, and it's outdated, and so we are moving forward with a new, a new company, and we went through our procurement process with that. Civic Plus won the bid. We have a projected start date. It's already, we're in the process now of beginning that. Again, with the, with the website, you have to build it from scratch, and staff will be working on that and getting council's input on what you would like to see on it. But we do have, expect a projected completion date of mid-2020. So once it's completed, we, we know that our residents will appreciate the user-friendly abilities of this website, so we can't wait to get it up and running.
And I think with the Tyler project and the website, we're looking for ways to gain efficiency, to be more fiscally responsible and customer-friendly. So these are steps that we're taking to ensure that we move forward. I told Davey the other day when we were talking, for many, many years, we've had a fishing boat. Our town is a fishing boat with one motor, and anybody could steer it. We're up to a Carnival cruise ship right now, and the adjustments are significant because we didn't have a whole lot of steps in between. You know, we went from zero to 60 really fast. So I'm very pleased and will be happy when these things are actually operational, but that's the intent. It's efficiency, fiscally responsible, and customer-friendly. So thanks to staff for the patience for running your jobs that were already overwhelming at times and taking on this. And Shante, you've just been amazing, been amazing. So thank you so much to each of you for what you've undertaken so that we can eventually get on that cruise ship and join the crowd.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The next project we'll be undertaking soon is the town hall renovation. The current town hall that we're in is a wonderful building. It's been a benefit for the town, once we purchased that from Comporium Communications. There are, there's need for additional office space in the, in the building, and we want to take advantage of every available opportunity we could for this facility. So there will be a brief period of construction going on very soon in town hall. I think our residents will notice that when they come in the front doors, but again, it will be for the benefit of not only staff, but for our residents. It should be a little more user-friendly for, for them and our water stewards customers. So we're, we're expecting to start that very soon in this quarter, and we know that we need to have it completed by, into September 2020. So I didn't have an exact date, because we're in that process, but it may be sooner than September before it's completed. The next project that we'll be working on is our police department. The current dispatch workstation is out of date, and in the current budget process, we anticipated we needed to do some upgrades to that part of the police station, so they're going through the procurement program or process right now to get, to acquire bids for that. Along with that work, there'll also be an additional office space or two. I think it's not a lot of office space, but it will add a couple more, so they're excited about that. We're very excited for them to upgrade this facility. Our utilities director, Greg Rushing, has been giving us updates periodically on our new water tank. And this is the most recent photo from it, and as you can tell, it is very white and shiny, so our final coat of paint was applied January 9th. We will soon add our town logo to that, and the projected completion date is early second quarter of 2020.
If you go out there and the sun's shining real bright, you might need sunglasses.
It's possible. We think it's going to be very attractive, and it will definitely be a benefit to our water customers in Fort Mill, so we're excited about completing this project soon.
Donation of the location for this water tower, recipient of funding that was applied for, and again, we're looking for customer efficiency, we're looking for water pressure on that side of town. Everything is moving in a direction to make sure we're doing the right things the right way.
Yes, ma'am.
When will it be raised?
We anticipate it being raised on the 25th of this month. It'll probably be an all-day process.
Please, if you are thinking about looking at it, it is a construction zone. Say that again, it is a construction zone, and I don't want to hear any reports of somebody just wanting to get a good view and getting hurt. So please look from the street and allow those folks to stay on schedule and under budget. That would be awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. The next project, again, Greg has given us updates, or periodic updates, on our wastewater treatment facility. The expansion of the facility is still, it's under construction, and we are projected to complete it in 2022. It is going, it's going to be able to handle 4.5 million gallon per day of wastewater. So that is, that is another construction site, and they're very strict out there, but we're excited about that, about that upgrade. Moving on, I had brought this up earlier. Our utilities department is currently under, in the process of changing out our current water meters to a Minnet Water Meter system. We're very excited about this system. The meters that are in the ground were at the end of their life cycle, so we needed to change the meters. And so we went, we studied this program and found that it's going to be a very beneficial for our customers. They're more interactive for them to keep up with their water usage, be able to send them some alerts if they so choose. With these meters, it's, they're pretty neat. If someone has an emergency, a water line break in their home, and they give us a call, we can actually turn the meter off at the, at town hall. So it would be, it'll save time for rolling a truck out, so it's a benefit to the customer on that part. Current project in is underway. For information, for areas that we're going to be actually changing the meters in, we're trying to do that by subdivisions and keep it contained in the area, and instead of just scattered out across town, we're trying to do it in phases across, across our town. You will see signage just as this for neighborhoods at entrances and exits, let you know that we have crews in the neighborhood at that time changing out the meters. The crews will have vehicles marked with, with their, with the Vanguard Services, and they'll be wearing.
Vests.
Their vest. They will be having door hangers that they'll be placing on the doors, letting you know that they've been there, so we want to make sure we get information out as much as possible. For detailed information, again, you can go to www.fortmillsc.gov/utilities and get the press release that we put out and the frequently asked questions.
Davey, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, have they been over in Whitewood Park?
Some have.
In the front of Whitewood Park, because I thought I saw a vehicle in some vests similar to that.
They were, and what that was, was that was, we have not began the actual mass meter change-out, but we had addressed a few hundred meters that had just not, that had stopped working that we needed to complete and change out first. So they were scattered around town, but then we're going to start moving in sequence. We expect this project to be completed mid-2020, so it's going to be a very quick process with 7,000 meters being changed out. We've also, we're in the process of upgrading two of our wastewater utility sewer lift stations. That would be our Poplar Street Lift Station or Old Charlotte Highway Lift Station. We targeted those in a study that we did recently of all of our stations. We were able to secure matching funds from our, from Rural Infrastructure Authority in the tune of $500,000. So we are, that's $500,000 we're putting toward this project that was, that's a grant, so we're very excited about that. The projected start date is second quarter of 2020. We expect it to be completed sometime in 2021. Next projects, the YMCA and the complex updates. The town began projects in 2019. This is a list of some of those projects in that timeframe. We had a window restoration. We changed out three heating units, heating and cooling units, the boiler system for the swimming pool. We did a roof, a roof restoration project. We included or added a pool evacuator. If you've been out there, you've noticed the sidewalks that we have changed out, some outdated sidewalks that had tripping hazards. We've added new sidewalks there and did some, some tree, tree work out there also. We have, we're continuing to do some projects here in 2020, some that are ongoing now. We're adding storefront doors to the current swimming pool area that will attach to the new aquatic center. We've already updated and made repairs to the sliding doors that are there, so they're working, they're in good working condition. We expect the storefront doors to be in in the next couple of weeks. We included a buffer tank for the boiler from the swimming pool. We found that we needed additional storage for that while, when it was up and operational, so we've completed that recently. We changed out a 15-ton heating and air conditioning unit for the fitness facility on, had to be at the front of the building, and we've, we're in the process of ordering a 300,000 BTU heating unit for the indoor pool area. So we're very excited about these projects. These were targeted from a site assessment that was done on the property, and that's where we're, that's the direction we're moving in at this point.
Davey and I were in a meeting earlier last week, as they are, the Y is looking futuristically at improvements, and one of the questions I asked was, "How are we doing on membership?" And incredibly so, it is increasing. They're, they're doing a good job. This is a fantastic project from a partnership standpoint. I think some of us attended a meeting held by the Council of Governments this past week as well, and it was on partnershipping. And when you look at the partnership between the town, the YMCA, Leroy Springs, and there's one more. School District, thank you. It's an incredible matchup. If you've been out to see the new pool, it's beautiful. I think it's something that's going to serve our community for the long haul. All these changes didn't happen immediately, and there will be further changes that will occur, improvements. But I've not had anyone say they weren't extremely pleased that we were maintaining and keeping that as an option for our community. It was a gift to us, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, our assistant town manager, Chris Pettit, has been working on our impact fee study. We received, recently received a draft. We'll receive it in January of 2020. We're projected to bring that in front of the planning commission for their consideration in the first quarter of 2020, and then also bring it to you during that same quarter. in the first quarter of 2020 and then also bring it to you during that same quarter. Projects that we have on the horizon that we'll be beginning some very soon is our Banks Athletic Park. The plans are completed. We're beginning the procurement process and we'll be in for the first quarter of this year. So, staff will be bringing you updates on that very soon where we are with that project. We're currently looking at possible sites for land clearing and debris for our Public Works Department and even options of how we operate in that arena. So, next on the list is the tennis courts at the YMCA at the complex. We've completed our RFQ, our request for quotes. Those are under review by staff and we'll be bringing you recommendations soon and get your input on that. The Fort Mill Community Center. We are soon to start a facility assessment of that building to find out its most useful.
Beneficial use.
Yeah. And so, we expect to begin that in the second quarter of this year. Also, Wayfinder signage, we do, we've got that in this year's budget. We expect to start that project in the second quarter of this year also. Projects that are currently on the horizon also, where staff will be working on a facilities master plan to provide to council, Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. That's a long-term plan on properties or town-owned parks, facilities, public rights away, you know, sidewalks and things of that nature. We have a sidewalk project that will be taking place in the Springfield neighborhood to go along with the sidewalks that was recently installed along AO Jones Boulevard and the Parkway.
Which I think is important to note when you say that, it's related to the foot traffic between Springfield and Nation Ford High School and the traffic that occurs between those two. So, these are safety considerations that we're undertaking.
That's correct. That's correct.
That sign that says private property, keep out.
Yes, sir. But hopefully, when we, if we add this connecting sidewalk, it will make it a much easier process for them or area to walk. Railroad Avenue, staff has determined that we may can provide a few more parking areas, parking spaces along Railroad Avenue. We're currently, it's under, it's being, having architect take a look at it, provide us a proposal for that. So, we'll be bringing that to you very soon. And then Dog's Bridge Park, we have homes out there that we are beginning the process through our procurement department as to how we have those removed. So, we'll be making you aware of those very soon also. And so, with that, Mayor, that pretty much includes our projects that we're currently working on and ones that we have coming down the pipeline.
And these are in addition to our day-to-day duties of managing the operation of the town and the water department, the police department, and the fire department and a host of other things that occur. So, thank you so much for that update. We find it difficult as we have so much going on to actually get an update in a concise form to be able to provide. So, thank you for taking the time to do that.
You're welcome, Mayor. And staff is working on a template that we can provide you that's, we can update periodically and you should be able to go in at different times and see where each project stands. So, you should be seeing that in the next month or so.
That's wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I ask one question? I had this from a citizen the other day. The medical park that's supposed to be going on Tom Hall Street, do we know anything about that at this time?
You talking about behind Walgreens?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's still tied up in the entity that purchased the property with the intent to do so.
Oh, okay.
We would not have a role in that other than to approve the plans.
Somebody had just asked me what the status was and I really was not sure.
It's still in their hands, you know, their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to ask permission, Barry, you might want to weigh in on this. We have some presentations of our parade winners at the end of our schedule. Would it be okay to do those now so those folks can escape waiting us out for our executive session?
Well, of course, Mayor, that would mean that I couldn't escape after executive session.
What if I didn't give you permission? You have been a treat here lately, I must say.
Since the agenda is posted, I would, we've got flexibility to do every one of them.
Thank you. I would like to do the presentations because I feel like these folks have been more than gracious in waiting us out. And I don't think our executive session is going to take long, but I'd hate for you to have to sit here while we're chatting. So, with permission, can we move forward with that?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Our Christmas parade. What a joyous event for our community and for those of us that walk, ride, or participate in it yearly. It is so much fun to see people along the route that are there specifically just to wave and say hello and, you know, participate in bringing the spirit of Fort Mill to the street itself. So, come on in.
Come on in.
Come on in. We're so happy to see you. So, Brown, are you going to assist in the awards presentations or?
Yes, I'll.
Chris, please.
Yes, for Billy.
A parade would not be a parade without the people that participate in it. So, Davey, are you going to read off?
Yes, ma'am.
Who has been?
I'll be glad to do that. Okay, we want to first off thank each and every one of you for participating in our parade. You made our parade what we consider the best in South Carolina. So, thank you again for participating. Thank you for competing. We try to add a little bit of fun to our parade, not only coming out and waving to the crowd, but showing your spirit and support for the town. For the award for the best car, that actually goes to the He Jazz Hot Wheels.
Woo-hoo!
And Mayor, if you, we've been around. No, ma'am, we've been around for years and I will say I've been going to the parade since I was a little boy. And they're the most, not these guys, but this group.
That's amazing. They're not old enough.
For me, they've been the best part of the parade for years.
They're so much fun. Thank you, thank you so much for the joy you bring us each and every year.
For the best walking group, that goes, that's being awarded to the Fort Mill High Marching Band.
All right. Woo! What an excellent group. Thank you so much for representing our community so well.
For the most holiday spirit, that goes to the Adult Enrichment Center.
All right.
And Mayor, there was a tie for this with Just Be Dance Academy, but they were not able to make it tonight. So, we will make sure we get their award to them.
All righty.
For the most creative, that goes to the Carolina Show Ski Team.
Incredible. Thank you.
So, again, we want to thank each and every one of you for participating and we hope you come out in next year's parade as well.
Please do.
Thank you.
We enjoy you so much.
You had a great time, it was so much fun.
All righty then. All right.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you. I miss Benny being here. Uh-oh, I've lost one.
Mayor, it ain't over yet. He's gone.
One, two, three, four. Okay, we've still got a courtroom. We're good. Only here. With that being said, we will move into an executive session. Please take note, council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when we come back into public session. Our executive session item tonight is a discussion of potential sale of real property. We do not take votes in executive session. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. We will return. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session. I would like a motion to return to regular session, please. And a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. One last item would be to mention the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Call to Service Week this week. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Everybody can be great because everybody can serve." Please join us as the Town of Fort Mill hosts the Martin Luther King Call to Service Week 2020. We're spotlighting area organizations the week of January the 13th through the 20th, that's this week. You can serve your community and honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy by donating the items below on the corresponding day. We have a drop-off location at the Fort Mill Town Hall, 200 Tom Hall Street. Well, drop-off times are 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday of this week, and 8 a.m. to 10 a.m., Monday, January the 20th. Looking donations. We're looking at tabletop games for adults, new pots and pans, new cooking utensils, oven mitts, aprons, cases of water, cases of Gatorade for monthly events at Steel Street Park, three-by-five white and lined index cards, personal pencil sharpeners, high-quality backpacks, 17-inch minimum, shampoo, body wash, toilet paper, instant coffee, diapers, size newborn one, baby wipes, Gerber Good Start Formula, men's boxers and sweatpants, size medium to four extra large, these need to be new, bath towels, bedding, blankets and throws, washing and dish detergent, paper towels for residents of Fort Mill. The organizational spotlight here will be for the Adult Enrichment Center, Historic Paradise Foundation, Classroom Ready, the Fort Mill Care Center, Palmetto Women's Center, Bethel Men's Shelter. These are such worthy organizations that contribute greatly to those in need in our communities and I'm so proud of the Town of Fort Mill for being active and serving instead of just celebrating. So, thank you so much for the staff and the work on the town's behalf to pull this together and make a meaningful difference in the lives of those that we serve. So, thank you so much for that. With that, Mr. Huntley, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Not really. I think the drought's over.
I think you're right. I think you might just be right.
I'm just real proud of everything I see about Fort Mill. Everything from the gutters being clean, concrete gutters, to the way the cemetery looks, to the way our Christmas thing looked.
Oh, it was beautiful.
It was very nice.
Beautiful. Absolutely. Trudy?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Chris?
Gosh, they both said they were getting it. Mm-hmm. All right. No, I was glad to be back, be able to serve for four years, four more years. You guys probably didn't know what you were getting four years ago when it's ready for Appleton Door.
God, we still elected you, I don't know.
I know.
And then you re-elected.
I know. Where are these people thinking? I'm just kidding. But it's a pleasure to serve. I'm really glad to be able to be back and to sit up here as the whippersnapper of the crowd, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
So, but, go LSU.
Rodney?
Watch your mouth. I'm good.
You're good?
Man, I'm good.
Three out of five.
Yeah, and I'll curtail, but I do want to say thank you for the hard work. The Christmas downtown Fort Mill was amazing. I've had so many compliments over and over and over again on just the feel of it, the look of it, how well it was done and handled. And Virginia, I can't thank you enough for your organization of our events for our staff, which are extremely important to us. You care for us in a way that we just are so fortunate to have you. So, I think we're headed out to a good 2020. We've got some planning coming ahead, some hard work. We have some hard work. It was an interesting year, 2019, and I think if we push hard, we'll take on a good path for 2020. So, with that, I'll enter.
Let me digress.
Let's digress.
When I was looking at my election, I said 2024. I can't even fathom 2024.
It is a little difficult, but it's passing quicker than I imagined.
We're being Jets' age.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.